Yes, we'd like to call this meeting to the order. Westland Planning Commission meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
I am going to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Okay, roll call. Durante.
Present.
Folks.
Present.
Rappaport.
Present.
Richards.
Here.
Statchow.
Present.
And Thompson.
Present.
We have a quorum?
Approval of minutes, please.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Mr. Rappaport, support by Ruby Richards.
Roll call, or I'm sorry, approval of the December 5th, 2023 meeting minutes. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
And Thompson. You were excused, okay. Minutes are approved.
Next on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens here that would like to make a comment? If so, raise your hand and be recognized. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium.
This isn't on the agenda, it's just to thank Kent for everything he's done for the 27 years that he's served on this committee. Kent's done a heck of a job as we saw last night, serving with every existing mayor in the city of Westland. So Kent, thanks for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Great, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the first item, agenda item. Case number 2264, land division 611 North Harvey, John Graham. Mr. Ayo.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The subject properties here are zoned R5, single-family residential. The two properties making up this case are highlighted in yellow on your screen. The property at 6111 North Harvey is 100 feet wide and developed by a single-family dwelling. That's the larger square on your screen. The property at 6077 North Harvey is 40 feet wide and also developed by a single-family dwelling. That's the smaller rectangle on your screen. The petitioner in front of you today is seeking approval to split off 30 feet from the larger square and combine it with the smaller triangle. That's essentially what the request is for. If you ignore this yellow line here in the middle and account for this red line, that's basically what the two parcels will look like if this is approved. Both resulting parcels that I just described will comply with the minimum zoning requirements of the R5 district, which includes the minimum width and depth and also lot area for parcels in the R5 district. The administration and planning department are recommending approval of this case. This is the survey indicating the existing lots and parcels. You can see the larger parcel there to the north. And then this with the dark red outline are what the two parcels will look like, approximately the same size there. Petitioner is present and can answer any questions, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of the administration as well. Thank you.
My name is Scott Larus, I'm John Graham, and I appreciate you hearing me this evening. Basically, we just had the neighbor approach us and we're trying to be kind. He has a kind of a smaller side lot. We purchased a lot that has plenty of land and he wanted to buy the 30 feet from us, so we told him, yeah, split it off. We've done that work to do so. Neither house is for sale. Our house is vacant, we're going to rehab it. It's going to be really nice when we get done. We haven't pulled any permits or filed the vacancy apps on it, but we will as soon as the land split's done, and it'll be listed and a nicer home when it's done. Our home will be, the one that the land's being cut off for, the Jones is going to remain there.
Thank you. Any questions from any one in the audience regarding this?
Oh, ma'am.
You're not on the commission? I have no questions. No questions for the commission? Mr. Rappaport?
The only thing I just wanted to, well, I see in the analysis section, this is to the administration, just confirming that the 30-foot exchange between the two properties would not cause any setback shortages?
That's correct. Oh, yeah, that's correct.
Then if there's no other discussion, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Statchow's already mentioned she's going to make a motion.
Then go ahead and make that motion. Name that too?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to, well, actually, this isn't a public hearing, but I'd like to make a motion to send case number 2264, proposed land division and combination 611 and 6077 North Harvey, west side of the North Harvey and north of Stacy. And if we could send this to City Council, and the administration and planning department recommend that this petition be forwarded to the City Council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Motion made by Ms. Statchow, support by Mr. Rappaport, was that you?
It was Mr. Durante.
Durante. Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote to recommend approval of case number 2264. Durante.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
And Thompson.
Yes.
Motion to recommend approval passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to case number 1186B, rezoning from CB1, low-intensity commercial business district to CB4, vehicle service district 37387 Ford Road, southeast corner of Ford and Newburgh. Oliver Nasralla, Mr. Ayo.
Thank you, Ms. Chairwoman. The subject parcels here are located on the southeast corner of Ford Road and Newburgh. Parcel 56, I'm not going to say the parcel on record, I'm sorry. There are two parcels that are zoned R1, single-family residential, and there is one parcel that is zoned CB1, low-intensity commercial district. This is the parcel that's zoned CB1 here where my cursor is. Let me turn it to a different, this one right here, and then this one over here on the east side, and this one over here on the south side of that CB1-zoned parcel are both zoned R1, that's a single-family residential. The petitioner, and I'm sorry, just to backtrack, all three of these parcels make up the electronic electric connection development. The petitioner tonight is proposing to rezone all three parcels to CB4, which is our vehicle service district, to facilitate the development of an oil change shop. The petitioner did present a concept plan for the oil change shop at this site utilizing that third small parcel in the rear. However, that's not what we're discussing today, but I just thought I'd put it up on the screen really quickly. The adjacent land uses and zoning in the area, property to the north over here is zoned CB4 and is developed by a fueling station. Property to the west over here is also zoned CB4, vehicle service and is developed by car wash, well, I'm sorry, it was rezoned to PUD, that's our planned unit development. That was part of the Sienna Health, Senior Health Clinic that's in the back of the car wash. And then to the west of the car wash is the Dairy Queen, which is also part of that PUD. Property to the south is zoned R1, single-family residential, and it's vacant, undeveloped. And property to the east is also undeveloped, zoned R2, single-family residential. And this area makes up that large swath of a square mile of land that's largely undeveloped and also includes Tatten Park and the former City Hall site. So that's just a brief overview of the area. Part of the rezoning process, when I'm writing my staff report, three things that I'd like to discuss with the Planning Commission tonight. The staff report requires me to address suitability of the property in question as it relates to the existing zoning district and the uses that are permitted under that zoning district, and if they are suitable for that land. So as we mentioned earlier, the site is developed with electronic connection that I believe is now closed or closing. It's a small electronics retail store. The site is zoned CB1, at least that's what I'm considering since it's developed by a retail use. We know that two of the other parcels are zoned residential. In the CB1 district, it provides for a wide variety of permitted and special land uses, most of which are consistent with the site's future land use designation. These are uses like office space, whether it be medical or professional, retail spaces as well. Restaurants and bakeries fall within to that zoning classification as well. Again, some are special land uses, some are permitted by right. Therefore, the planning department thinks that the property is suitable for the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification. Addressing another point as part of the staff report, the trend of development, if any, in the area and also the property in question. And I'd like to note here that there has been some development along the Ford Road corridor, some significant development particularly in this area, west of Newburgh on the other side of this property. The development has been somewhat transformative as we've talked about in our master plan meetings and our zoning ordinance update meetings. There has been a car wash developed on the southeast corner opposite of this side, this site. And there has been a variety of other uses, the Dairy Queen that I mentioned, there's been Common Citizen, which is a marijuana retail dispensary that's also been developed. So I just wanted to mention that as well for the record. There has been no changes in zoning in the immediate area or along the Ford Road corridor in this area again. And finally, the objectives of the Westland Comprehensive Master Plan, the last master plan was from 2018 and indicates that this property is future land use designated for neighborhood, commercial, and office services. The excript from the master plan reads neighborhood, commercial, office services, uses provides for the sale of convenience goods and personal business services for day-to-day needs of the immediate neighborhood. These uses draw from a distance of approximately 1 to 1 1/2 mile depending on the density and character of the residential area. The objective of complying with the master plan and future land use designation for the site, the planning department determines that it has not met with this proposed rezoning. And then further, you know that we have the Reimagine Ford Road DDA Plan, which also calls for and recommends for a variety of aesthetic improvements to Ford Road, which we have done some of, and also addresses the variety of uses that are recommended to be in the Ford Road corridor, and also further explicitly restricts auto-oriented businesses from further developing on the Ford Road corridor. So with all of that said, the planning department finds that this rezoning request is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and also the Reimagine Ford Road sub-area plan, and is therefore recommending denial of the applicant's rezoning request. What I have on the screen again is an outline of what the property, the subject property is and the subject site, including the three parcels. This is a survey which is in your backup. This is a zoning map, not usually put up on the screen, only put up on the screen for rezoning cases. We haven't had many of those last year, so calling this out. The blue is CB4, our GIS department has not updated this. This is all PUD now, so it's an orange color. And this is the CB1, and this is the residential district here. This green is also residential as well. And as I mentioned earlier, the concept plan, and this is the, as you know, the electronic connection that exists there today. Petitioners here in front of you, who can answer any questions? And I can as well on behalf of the administration. Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Oliver. I was hired by the guys that want to open this oil change to see if we could help rezone this property. These guys don't run standard oil changes. They have a brand of really nicely architecturally designed and beautiful oil changes that they're keeping all of the ones that they own across the state under the same standard. They've expressed to me that they are willing to, in lieu of the city's master plan and what you guys want to see along Ford Road, they're willing to go, you know, maybe just do some extra things to make sure that that corridor is beautiful while their business is operating. The site plan that we had put together shows that we potentially will end up with plenty of space for vehicles to circulate, for deliveries to be made to the business, and then cars to park, but there's probably going to be an ample amount of parking spaces. And we were discussing earlier before I came here, the possibility of even adding EV charging stations to the site to help with the demand that's been growing for that. And so that section of the site could be something that's developed really nicely in a low-impact place for people to quickly come off of Ford Road, charge their EVs in a quiet area, and then come back onto Ford Road. As of now, that's all I really have for you. I hope that that's enough to get this at least into a bigger conversation with the city to see how we could develop it together, but it doesn't sound like they want to push it through. So I'd be interested to hear if you have questions or what the opinion of the board is on this.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from the audience? Hearing none, we'll move to the commission. Mr. Rappaport?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So first of all, I'd like to, well, thank you, your company, I guess, for trying to bring business here to Westland. I want to make sure that you understand that we do appreciate your interest in coming to Westland, even though this is obviously going to be a difficult petition for us to examine.
Okay.
And I'm not completely sold one way or the other. I am going to ask you some very pointed questions.
Okay.
And I don't want you to take it as hostility.
Nope. If I can answer them, I'd be happy to answer them, but if it's...
So you said that you're not, it says in our packet here that the petitioner is Oliver Nasralla?
Yep.
Are you Oliver Nasralla?
That's correct.
Okay. And you're representing some sort of a Valvoline Quick Oil Change?
Yep.
I only caught a quick glimpse of it, but I recognize the symbol.
Yeah, the Valvoline logo, and the name of the brand is Planet Oil Change.
Okay. And are you an attorney, sir?
No.
Okay. You're just representing them as an agent?
Yeah, we're the architecture firm that's doing the work for them.
The architecture firm?
Yep.
So I guess the first question I have to ask is, there are a number of locations available in Westland that would not require rezoning.
Okay.
Why is this particular location the location that you intend to use even though it would require zoning, rezoning?
Good question.
I intend them all to be.
You know, I, so hats off to you. I think it's the location of it being on that prominent intersection that's very attractive to them. I'm not familiar with other locations that would be good for that. We can take a look at it and see internally with the team if it's something they'd be willing to consider, but I know that, you know, they looked at this, they were in talks with the owner of the property for some time, and that's kind of where we are now. So maybe they'd be interested in other areas, but I think it's the fact that this thing is a prominent intersection, and you have, you know, the two gas stations that are one kitty corner and the other one across from it, just made sense for them to try to get on there.
Okay. So aside from my responsibilities here on the Planning Commission, I chair the Zoning Board of Appeals. So I'm quite familiar with zoning, the zoning laws and the reasons for zoning. And I'm sure you're at least reasonably experienced with zoning. Zoning exists.
Right.
To keep incompatible uses from being next to each other.
Right.
So there's no doubt that this is a good location for a business to be located. The question is, and the question that you're going to have to answer probably eventually either to the City Council or convince this board first, is your use there, how is it compatible with the uses that you would be neighboring? How would it keep from being incompatible? Because currently, the use there is a CB1, which is low-impact commercial, and you're proposing an automotive use in that, in contravention to our city's plan for that corner, which is to either have it residential or low-impact commercial. How is that actually an improvement for the city for that particular location, especially when a compatible use could be better had at a different location in the city?
Okay. That's a good question.
As I said, I intend them all to be.
Yeah. So would I have an opportunity to answer that question at some point, like through email, or is that something that I have to answer now?
I would imagine...
Is it do or die?
Well, you're before us today to convince us that we should be sending your request onto the City Council with a recommendation for approval.
Right.
I would imagine that you would come here with a reasonable explanation why you believe that a zoning change would be appropriate. Like, if it was simply us deciding that we don't want another gas station in that area, certainly you would be within your rights to say, hey, I just want to use this for what it was intended, but you're not. You're asking us to change what we intend to use that section for, for your benefit. And all you've actually told us so far, and I'm going to paraphrase for you, is that you want to use it because it would be beneficial to you, and I assure you, we'd be really nice there. Well, we assume that. We definitely give you the benefit of the doubt coming before us, that you're a reputable businessman, and that you're going to put money forth and make a beautification in whatever area that you can. What we're looking at right now is, is it reasonable for us as representatives of the citizenry of Westland to change what our plan is for that particular corner for you? Are you prepared to actually make that argument?
I would have prepared demographics on how many people live in the city versus how many of them have close access to oil changes versus how much traffic goes to those oil changes versus how many of them have been in business for a certain amount of years and how dilapidated those sites may be, and the city can't really enforce them to, you know, maybe fix their lots or fix their frontages and, you know, just, you know, I would have that information if I knew that the question ahead of time would, you know, would require that, maybe that's on me. But I think the answer or some supporting evidence in that to help my case would be found somewhere in that investigation. And I think that at that point, if I showed that, hey, here's kind of the map of where everything is, and here's where the really old stuff is that maybe the city wants to be, see phased out as these new developments come into town, here's where they are, and this is actually really conveniently located for people in this neighborhood, and here are the traffic counts, and this is why it's more easily accessible than this other one. And if you let us open, then the free market would dictate that this oil change would lose business because this new one is in town and it's nicer and it's cooler and it's faster and the site's much nicer and they keep a cleaner operation, and then that one goes out of business and it gets redeveloped in the future somewhere there. And that's kind of how I would form the argument, and I think I could find some solid evidence in that way.
Okay. Well, let me tell you a little bit about the landscape around you that you're looking at. So at the corner of John Hicks and Ford, which is just the next intersection over, you've got a quick oil change right there. Going in, which you might not be aware of, going in shortly, we've approved a quick oil change in the parking lot of the Lowe's, which would also be very close to you. There's other quick oil changes also in the city within a reasonable distance that already pre-exist. Once again, certainly, we don't doubt that your business is going to be nice, and we're not in the business of picking winners and losers here. That's not what we do. What we do is we give an opportunity to, well, to have the public hear what's being proposed, be able to comment, and we kind of act as a filter to give first ear and first impressions, both for your benefit and for the City Council's benefit. So another thing that you should be considering and aware of is not only are you going to be very close to already existing similar uses, you're going to be very close to other uses that might be incompatible to you. Although there are gas station and a vehicle washing area, you're going to be on the same side of Ford Road as residential and, my apologies, as residential and a retirement village, which is one of the reasons I'm sure why the administration is so concerned that this particular use, whatever use replaces the electronic connection, is going to be a low-impact use, which of course CB4 would not necessarily be considered low-impact. So I really wish you had been a little bit better prepared to address the zoning issues before us, because we could be very positively inclined towards your prospective use, but not necessarily in this location because of what the master plan actually calls for in this area. As a matter of fact, I believe most of us would be very interested to see your business grow and thrive, just not necessarily at this corner. So with that, I will pass the floor. I don't think that I should be torturing our petitioner anymore.
Any more comments from the commission? Okay, the floor is open for nomination.
I'll take that. With respect to case number 1186B, rezoning CB1 to CB4 Vehicle Service District... With respect to case number 1186B, rezoning CB1 to CB4 Vehicle Service District, I move to close the public hearing, waive the normal rules, and send this matter to the City Council with a recommendation for rejection.
Do we have a second?
Support.
Roll call, please.
That was Richards that supported, I'm sorry, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, vote to recommend denial of case number 1186B. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
And if I may, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I do actually think that this is a good, a good proposal, just not necessarily at this location. We would like to see you back.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number four, consideration of a 2023 Planning Commission Annual Report. Mr. Ayub?
Uh, thanks. Uh, the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and, uh, city policies both require that the planning, well, that the City Council approve the Planning Commission's annual report, which includes, um, basically a list of activities that the Planning Commission took action on. That is what is presented to you. Nicole took the lead on drafting it. We both reviewed it, and it's being prepared and submitted to you for approval today. And it will proceed to the City Council meeting whenever that is, after tonight's meeting.
Any comments from Commissioners? I see none, or that requires roll call, Mr. Ray.
Uh, if, you could just say if.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll support.
Motion to approve the Planning Commission's annual report as submitted.
Motion by Mr. Rappaport, support by Mr. Richards. Roll call.
Uh, okay. Roll call to approve the 2023 Planning Commission Annual Report as presented. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, your annual report is approved.
Before we move on to the final one here, election of offices, offices as needed, just want to take a moment and recognize our past Chairman, Mr. Kenneth Sharp. Thank you, sir, for coming out. Try to do my best. Number five, election of offices as needed. Floor is open for nominations for Chairman. Is that the best way? I'd like to nominate David Rappaport, please. Support as for chairperson. Nomination for David Rappaport as Chairman by Ms. Statchow, support by Ms. Richards.
I don't know if that's, can be done or not, because he's also on the zoning board. It'd have to redraw, withdraw from the zoning board in order for him to take Chairman.
Absolutely. I, I appreciate the, the point of order from the, from my, from my colleague. So, this was discussed prior to today's meeting. We, we had a discussion with Brandon Grisco, where we took a look at the, at the requirements of the, of the Zoning Enabling Act. And it does appear that, that it would be impossible for me to serve more than one, more than one office on this board. In the event that, that I was elected, I would have to abdicate the, the position of liaison with the Zoning Board of Appeals, which would of course necessitate me also giving up my, my Chairman position of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I've been, I've been apprised of this, I'm aware of it, and in order to serve as the Chairperson of this body, I would gladly do it.
Okay. Motion remains. Roll call for Chairman.
I believe nominations would need to be closed, Madam Chairperson.
Sorry. Moving on quickly here. Close nominations. Roll call.
Okay, nominations are closed. There's only one nomination, and we are, roll call, vote to elect Rappaport as Chairperson of the Planning Commission. Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Rappaport? Or, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah, Richards?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
And Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Rappaport is your new Chairman.
Motion passed. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Move it on.
Would you like to elect a new ZBA liaison, or would you like to wait till February? We will have a February zoning board meeting. So you can wait until then, or you can do it now, or you can sit on it, think about it.
Well, Deborah, would you, would you like me to take over the meeting, or would you like to finish this one out?
I'll finish it out, and you can take.
I'd appreciate it. Uh, I do believe that it would be prudent if there is a willing participant to, to take over the, the liaison position, that we have that person in place. I would, I would certainly attend the, the next meeting of the, the ZBA and formally retire from those, from those positions.
Okay. Moving on to election of the Vice Chair.
You are the Vice Chair, right? It's the ZBA liaison.
ZBA liaison. Also?
I would, I would nominate, if she is willing to serve, Deanna Statchow.
Or the, um, ZBA liaison?
Should I explain what the?
Sorry, as lia, as liaison of this body to the ZBA.
Whoever's the Chair right now, can I, can I just describe whoever, what the zoning board of appeals is and, and the position? Okay. Uh, so the Zoning Board of Appeals is a body similar to this one, actually appointed by the City Council. Um, and, um, the Planning Commission gets to appoint a member to sit on the zoning board as sort of a, a link of information. Uh, that person votes, gets to engage in dialogue and discussion, um, but is, is sort of a link between the two. And sometimes, some of the cases that occur here will also require a visit to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, mostly the Zoning Board of Appeals hears dimensional variances. So if there's a site plan that is approved here, and at the City Council level, that does not comply with the, um, full intent of the, of the zoning ordinance, requires a rear yard setback, so it doesn't comply with the 30-foot rear yard requirement, maybe only has 18 feet, that will need to be, all deviations from the zoning ordinance require approval by the Zoning Board of Appeals. There's other things that the Zoning Board also reviews that the Planning Commission and City Council do not have purview or authority over. Won't get into all that right now. Um, the Zoning Board meets on the third Wednesday generally of every month at 5:30 sharp. Um, right at, basically, right when work ends, they start coming in, or right, right when City Hall closes, they start coming in. Um, meeting starts at 5:30. Uh, oftentimes, in the past, not promising this happens in the future, uh, but zoning Board of Appeals meetings are canceled, which is a good thing, because that means that there's no, um, rules being broken per se, um, or, or deviations being requested from the zoning ordinance. Uh, so that's pretty much it. I can answer any questions about that in detail. Try to keep it short, but that's essentially what you're signing up for. And, um, whoever it is from the Planning Commission, we will rely on you heavily, because, um, that's just the way it needs to be, I guess. That's it.
Are you accepting the nomination, Statchow?
Uh, yes. And would Sam be interested in this also?
Well, you've been nominated, so.
It is third second for, for the session.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I second.
You second. Second by Nicole? Roll call. No roll call. I don't have to close the nominations, I forgot that one again.
In the event that, that he is interested in the, the position, I would also like, like there to be consideration for, for Sam Durante for the, for the position of liaison to the ZBA. So I will nominate him if there is a second, and he is willing to serve.
Nomination for Mr. Durante as the second person by Mr. Rappaport, support by Ms. Richards. Roll call?
Let me write this.
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry.
I can roll call, vote if you close the nominations.
Interested?
I've been interested.
Okay. So we have two nominations on the floor? Okay.
Before you close nominations, who motioned and supported Statchow? Please.
Movement was Rappaport.
Support Richard.
Richard.
Okay, thank you. Uh, please close nominations if you're ready to do so.
Yes. Nominations are closed.
Close nominations? Is there?
Support?
Support.
Motion made by Mr. Rappaport, support by Ms. Richards. To close the nominations for the zoning board appeal, I'm sorry, zoning board liaison.
Okay. So now we have to figure out who I'm going to roll call vote on first.
Point of, point of order. I believe that there should be a period of discussion
Okay.
as we, as we have two candidates roughly equally qualified, we should actually have a discussion. Uh, so, if, if I may, be allowed?
Yes.
So both of our candidates here are, in my opinion, very well-suited for the, for the position. Uh, the, certainly, the, the administration did a very fine job of describing what, what goes on at the, the ZBA. Uh, I'm going to, well, I'm going to take a little bit of the, the disambiguation into it. Uh, we approve fences. Like, people want fences in places that they shouldn't have fences, and we go, yeah, you can have a fence, unless there's a problem with it. Uh, we, it, the, the procedure on that board is very similar to what we do here. Uh, however, what happens on the, the ZBA is a little bit more rule-based than, than we do here. What we do here is provide a forum for discussion. What we do there is, is a little bit more judicial in its scope. Like, the, the people that come up to the podium, they're sworn in and put under oath, uh, under penalty of perjury. And the decisions that we make have lasting consequences for the, for the properties that, that are there. And I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure Sam already knows that, because he's been here for a very long time. But this is more for, for you, Deanna. Uh, the, the, when we make approval motions, we have a form that we, that we follow that, that's based on both, both statute for, for variances and legal precedents that determines what is, what is an appropriate consideration for us to have before we make a, a variance that would run with the land forever. So, certainly, you wouldn't be taking the same position that, that, that I would be leaving, because I am currently seated, sitting as the, as the Chairperson of that body. But the bodies, much like, much like our body here, they're very cooperative with each other, uh, very communicative with each other. We do not do study sessions, notably at the, the ZBA, because it would be inappropriate, because we are a judicial body, not a deliberative one. So, as far as Deanna's qualifications for the, for the position, I feel that she would bring a, a, an organizational element to the, to the body that, that the body would, would certainly like. Um, as far as Sam is concerned, I believe that Sam would be a good addition to that body, because Sam has a great passion for the city and, and what goes on for the, for the citizens of the, of the city. And both of those, both of those aspects would be a, a great add to that body.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yes. You're the Chair? Yes.
Thank you very much for that thorough explanation. I do appreciate it. I, I had, in the process of building my own home, I had to go to the zoning board and, and, and request an appeal as well, because my property at the time, the home was placed on an area that was six feet off. So they had literally dug a basement that was not properly placed within that zoning area. So, once again, I had to go in front of a zoning board as well. So, being on the other end of experience, it was a lesson for me. And I appreciated that, because at the time, I had, I was building my home, and I had quite a bit involved. So, I am familiar and, on the other end of the spectrum in regards to the zoning as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durante, do you have any comments tonight?
No.
Okay, we're moving on for our close the nominations, and move on for vote.
Okay. We're ready for a vote. I need the Planning Commission's assistance with this, because I just can't do this. This on the fly. Um, last night, there was a similar situation with the City Council, and they put two, um, index cards in a box and shook them, and whatever name was drawn out first, that's the vote that occurred first. So I don't have a box, I don't have index cards. So if you two want to allow me to flip a coin, and you can call heads or tails, or whoever wants to do that, um, we can do that, if, if everyone is in agreement with that. Or we can pause, and I can go find a box and some note cards.
Take the vote for Deanna first.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. This is a roll call vote to elect Deanna Statchow as the Planning Commission's ZBA liaison. Uh, Durante?
13.
Uh, Folks?
Yes.
Uh, Rappaport?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Uh, Statchow, I'm going to skip you, and Thompson?
Yes.
Okay. Typically, we don't move on to the second person. Um, Statchow got all four votes, minus, minus Durante. Okay? Um, so, Deanna Statchow, you are the ZBA liaison. Congrats.
Congratulations, Deanna. More work for you. Okay, our next office is Secretary, isn't it, I believe?
Do we not have the Secretary?
We don't have it.
She's totally the Secretary.
Okay. All right, then I'm VP, so that's it?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, all right. Motion to adjourn.
That's four.
So moved.
Support by Ms. Richards.